Tuesday, December fifteenth. This is a Prescott City Council voting session. Uh, Councilwoman Scholl, do you have any announcements for us today?
Um, I'm, I'm sure most of you, if not all of you, saw the announcement yesterday that unfortunately, the, the boot drop was canceled, which is a real bummer. I think we were all kind of hoping to really celebrate the end of this tumultuous ye- year. So that's a real bummer, but I think it's the right call. We're just not in a place right now on our community where mass gatherings like that are, are safe and healthy for everyone. So um, I encourage you to still celebrate the new year um, in your homes and, and to it's a, it's a good year to make new traditions and try doing things differently and kind of enjoy a new tradition. So um, you know, continue to mask up physically, distance and wash your hands and stay home when you're sick.
Very good. Thank you for that. And I'm assuming we have Pastor Matt Kotman on the line, Sarah?
Do um, and Pastor, I just went ahead and allowed you to unmute um, so you-
I'm here.
Hi there. You can go ahead-
Very good. Thanks for joining us today, Matt. We're gonna have an invocation by Pastor Kotman. And then the pledge will be led by Councilman Sishka.
Okay. Could you join me in prayer? Father, coming to the end of twenty twenty, it's been a year that none of us have anticipated. And uh, we want to come to you as we pray for our city. Uh, we especially want to pray for those struggling from loneliness and depression in this Christmas season here in this Christmas city. We ask, Lord, that you would bring light and encouragement to them. For those suffering from COVID in our community, we ask that you would bring health and strength to them and strengthen our medical staff and our first responders and all those decision makers who are, are standing in the gap there. And Father, we also pray for our community as a whole, and we look to you as the author of life and breath, but also as the giver of hope, strength and wisdom. And we would ask that you would grant wisdom to our town leaders as they make decisions uh, that we would, or that they, they would make decisions that would be for the good of the community. That you would grant the city council grace to bring about decisions and policies that would work toward the flourishing of Prescott. And so, Father, we look to you and we thank you for your goodness. And we pray these things in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Councilman Sishka?
Yeah, would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag-
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic-
The republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible-
With liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you again, Pastor Kotman and Councilman Sishka. Let's call roll, please.
Mayor Mangarelli?
Here.
Mayor Protem Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Blair?
Present.
Councilman Good?
Present.
Councilmember Rusing?
Here.
Councilman Sishka?
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilwoman Ora is excused from the meeting.
All right. Very good. Thank you for that. We will move on to presentations. And it looks like we have Mr. Woodfield with us for a presentation on our taxable activity FY twenty-one.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Mark Woodfield, budget and finance director for the city. Um, we have eight months worth of history since the economic uh, incidents with the pandemic started happening back in March. So I thought it'd be a good time just to take a few minutes and go over tho- that, some of the information. Go ahead and share my screen here. Can you all see the slides on the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The first. All right. Uh, this is a slide that shows the composition by the NACs uh, sectors. And again, I put this up not trying to emphasize any part of our economy that's more important than another because of course, all areas employ people, employ people buy things. So each area kind of feeds on itself. So it's just more of a thing to remind everybody where the revenues that the city has to use to provide services come from. And again, obviously, general merchandise and food is our big one. Uh, motor vehicle sales and repairs are also huge here in the city of Prescott at fifteen percent of our total, and then construction and so on as we go around. This graph here is of the first uh, four months of the economic shutdown when the pandemic started back in the spring. As you can see there, I need to move you guys around. I can't see. The uh, the hotels and restaurants were obviously hit the hardest with uh, seventy-seven percent as the largest month in April. But the hotels were off, same month for restaurants were off fifty-one that year. As you'll notice, these uh, you know, the, these numbers fluctuated quite a bit as we went through the pandemic. The next slide takes the next four months. Uh, oh, just to clarify, we also, construction had some great growth during this home improvement stores, we know. And of course, our base, that general merchandise retail had solid growth all through this period, which really helped preserve our revenues. Uh, this uh, is the next four months. It's the same scale uh, to give you kind of an idea between the two graphs. So you can see uh, hotels and restaurants are still down, but not nearly uh, what they were. And obvious, actually, October uh, activity in hotels was actually at zero um, down from the year before. So those are all great signs of e- um, of economic recovery uh, or not recovery, but uh, coming back, I guess. It is a challenging recession to try to forecast because of how it, how it uh, laid out. Construction uh, is still having really strong growth. Again, these are from the NACs sectors, uh, the sections where a business will tell you what category they're in based on their code. So all their business activity falls in that. The next graph, the next graph uh, shows it by the business type activities. So one business in the general merchandise sector, let's say, could report revenue in several of these sectors. Um, like Costco has a snack bar, so they have restaurant revenue as well as retail sales type revenue. Um, so that's just something to keep in mind while the why the percentages don't quite line up between the two graphs is because they come from um, different sources. Great uh, great first four months of the fiscal year. Obviously, it's really hard to tell where the fiscal year will end. With uh, only four months to look at, but a twelve and a half percent increase, that's seventy-six billion more in additional taxable activity than the first four months of last fiscal year. If we look where that came from, obviously, uh, the big one, the big change there is our online retail. Last October was the first month that we actually started getting uh, tax from several online retailers. So uh, we have um, eighteen million more in taxable activity just because we, we have uh, four months as opposed to one month there. The general merchant or the retail sales section is at seven fifty-three million of that seventy-six million. And of course, construction is up thirteen million over the year before, which is good. And obviously, the others are down for a total of about eight million down. Now, I put this graph in here just to kind of uh, summarize everything as far as uh, we're seeing great growth. Construction is way up. Construction is a hard um, sector to really project because it fluctuates so greatly. Um, looking at this graph, this is fifteen years of tax code reporting activity. As you can see, back in two thousand and six, construction was a lot bigger than it is today, even after all these years of growth. Not a surprise. Back then, it was actually fifteen percent of our overall economic base. And obviously, as we know now, it's down to ten or eleven. So the growth we're seeing in construction is great. Glad to see it. It means jobs. It means uh, income for uh, our citizens and, and the people who live around the city. Uh, and we hope to continue to see it, but even um, with the activity we've had, construction is still fifteen percent lower than the high that it was uh, fourteen years ago. Uh, so just something to keep in mind. Also, while I'm in this graph, I thought I'd put restaurants and bars on there because they've seen such a traumatic loss um, for a few months uh, through this closure and stuff. But overall, restaurant and bars have had solid um, performance over the years. They're a lot more stable, like I say, than like construction, which is very cyclical, subject to economic ebbs and flows, as you can see in this graph. With that, again, I just wanted to get this information out there. Um, since we got eight months, it's, it's at least some level of history that we can see what's going on without be glad to answer any questions.
Yeah, very good. This is helpful, Mark. Uh, you know, and you're not wrong very often, but I'm glad you were wrong in projecting uh, what COVID might do to our fiscal year. Uh, this is very encouraging to see the twelve and a half percent increase year over year. Uh, with hotels, did I notice on the one slide here recently that the hotels really were starting to come back fairly strong here in the last month or two? Did I see that on a slide?
Yeah, right here you can see. Um, and actually, um, another uh, slide which I don't have in this is uh, uh, bed tax revenues for uh, September and October are actually above last year slightly. And why that is when we have this is some of the new online reporters, their NACs code is not hotels. They fall into other category, which is on here. Uh, but they do report and pay bed tax. So if we looked at, at bed tax um, receipts, which I could bring up really quick if you guys want to see those.
Well, I just think it's interesting to note, Mark, that uh, we know hotels and bars are hit pretty hard, but on this slide, you can see that they've come back fairly well, uh, which is encouraging and uh, kind of goes to show that um, you know, hopefully, they're gonna make it through this uh, difficult time.
Yeah, and I know it's uh, obviously a challenging um, no, I'm not sure what screen this thing is sharing. Can you guys see that?
No.
Right there?
No.
Probably not.
That's, that's okay.
Okay.
Que- questions, comments from the council? In general, anybody? Okay. Hearing none, uh, we will move on. Thanks again, Mark. Great presentation. Appreciate it. All right, let's move on to uh, consent agenda. Is there any item that any member of the council would like to pull from the consent agenda at this time? If not, I'll hear a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items seven A through seven D.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Let's take a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Blair? Councilman Blair, can you unmute yourself, please?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing?
Yes.
And Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Okay, let's move on to item eight A, please.
Public hearing and consideration for a new series three in-state microbrewery liquor license application from Amy S. Nations, applicant for Ad Astra Brewing Company, location one-two-three North Cortez Street. The application fees have been paid. The signs have been posted at the, for the required twenty days. Staff has reviewed the applications and determined that they are in compliance and no public comments have been received. And I do not have the applicant. She's not present now.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Let's take a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing?
Yes.
And Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Mayor, I move to approve recommendation for liquor license number one-two-four-two-four-eight for a new series three in-state microbrewery liquor license for Ad Astra Brewing Company located at one-two-three North Cortez.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Scholl?
Yeah.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing?
Yes.
And Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Passes six zero.
All right.
Public hearing and consideration for an owner transfer series seven liquor license application from Amy S. Nations, applicant for Ad Astra Brewing Company, location one-two-three North Cortez Street. The application fees have been paid. Signs have been posted for the required twenty days, and staff has reviewed the applications and determined that they are in compliance, and no public comments have been received.
Okay. Uh, we'll entertain a motion here.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing?
Yes.
And Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Mayor, I move to approve recommendation for liquor license number one-two-four-two-five-six for an owner transfer series seven beer and wine liquor license for Ad Astra Brewing Company, location one-twenty-three North Cortez.
Second.
Motion second. Take a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing?
Yes.
And Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Passes six zero.
It felt like deja vu, but anyway.
All over again.
Public hearing and consideration for an owner transfer series seven beer and wine bar liquor license application from Thomas Robert Aguilera, applicant for Spring Hill Suites by Marriott, location two-hundred East Sheldon. The application fees have been paid. The signs have been posted for the required twenty days, and staff has reviewed the applications and determined that they are in compliance, and no public comments have been received. Let me just take a look real quick here. It does not look like the applicant is in the call.
Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing?
Yes.
And Councilman Sishka?
Of course.
Passes six zero.
Mayor, I move the approved recommendation for liquor license number one-two-one-two-five-one for an owner transfer series seven beer and wine bar liquor license for Spring Hill Suites by Marriott located at two-hundred East Sheldon Road.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Blair?
Why, yes.
Councilman Good?
Yep.
Councilmember Rusing?
Yes.
Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Passes six zero.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on to item nine A, please.
Approval of city contract number two-zero-two-one-dash-zero-eight-four with Lifeline Ambulance Services Incorporated for contracted ambulance services.
Good afternoon, Mayor, uh, members of Prescott City Council, Dennis Light, City of Prescott Fire Chief. Uh, this afternoon's item before you uh, really is kind of a capstone to some uh, fifteen to sixteen months of uh, due diligence as we tried to work with our local provider of ambulance services to come up with something uh, for the betterment of service delivery to the citizens of Prescott. And I feel uh, after much back and forth uh, with Lifeline Ambulance, specifically John Valentine, that we've had a we've reached a crescendo in, of sorts to bring forward this contract. Couple of things I'd like to point out. First and foremost is although it didn't get us everything I was hoping for uh, in what I believe for the city, I do believe it is in the city's best interest. We've been uh, been able to accomplish some performance measures uh, which were important to any sort of contract uh, that outlines a service level that is uh, better uh, representative of our community and the size of our community. Uh, another item of uh, usefulness, I think, is it's uh, providing a number of uh, pieces of apparatus that will be specific and specific to the service for our community. Uh, I don't want to necessarily say they're dedicated per se, but for the most, uh, for all intents and purposes, they're vehicles that will be positioned within our city limit and ready to respond at a moment's notice through those nine-one-one calls for service. The term of the contracts uh, roughly for one year, uh, which we hope to continue over the course of the year and look for other opportunities to improve service levels. While we also look at the system to see where we may be able to uh, better uh, reflect the response modules so they are concurrent and congruent with the needs of what we face once we arrive on scene. All in all, I'm uh, very pleased that this contract's coming forward. It's uh, been some blood, sweat and tears along the way, but on the same token, I think uh, when I look at it in totality, the city uh, has a definite benefit by entering into this contract. And uh, with that, uh, we do have John Valentine as an invited guest with us today. If you have any questions for myself or uh, John, uh, we'd welcome those at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Uh, let's go uh, a- anybody else on staff? Michael, anybody else want to speak to this?
Mayor, I'd just like to uh, add to what the chief said. I appreciate his work and Mr. Valentine's work and the key to this in my mind is the performance benchmarks that are provided in this contract are significantly better than the existing benchmarks in the CON. And we're making inroads to improving the level of service here in Prescott. That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, we'll go to council at this point then. Uh, let's start with Councilman Blair.
No comment. That's what the art of negotiation gets you, is something better than we add.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Thanks, Mayor. I, yeah, I was pleased to see, I mean, I know we've been discussing this for a long time, but I was pleased to see the performance benchmarks uh, definitely an improvement and um, laid out a nice way to measure those and make sure that we're doing what we need to do to provide good ambulance service here in Prescott.
Great. Councilman Good?
Yeah, I too um, am happy that we have a contract now that is moving substantially in the direction that we uh, hope to achieve. I know that uh, Chief Light um, and City Manager Lamar and myself have had conversations with uh, Mr. Valentine and the other representatives from um, Lifeline. And I think um, this contract does allow us to monitor the uh, performance in a more significant way. Um, I still, still think that uh, we owe it to the um, residents to be able to respond on these code three um, calls throughout the city in a, in a period of time that will assure their uh, um, response to the real serious um, conditions. Um, so I think um, we've, we've achieved a lot of what we wanted to. And I think as we monitor both for the city and for Lifeline, the be- the ability to respond to these serious uh, cases in a uh, in a acceptable timeframe will be um, will be achieved here and then we can um, see how well we're doing to these expectations uh, a year from now. So I support this uh, contract.
Okay. Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. I would uh, just like to say that um, we as elected officials and our city staff, we need to be forever diligent and uh, keep an eye on uh, these kind of things. And um, improving uh, response time is uh, always a priority. Thank you.
And Councilman Sishka?
Uh, I get muted. Now I'm, now I'm unmuted. All right. Everybody has said it well, and I've got nothing to add.
Very good. Any public comment out there, Sarah?
No, Mayor.
Then we'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number two-zero-two-one-dash-zero-eight-four.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Uh, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing?
Yes.
And Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Passes six zero.
All right, let's move on. Yeah, thank you, Chief. Let's move on to item nine B, please.
Approval of twenty twenty-one legislative agenda.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Can you see the legislative agenda?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Uh, this year's legislative agenda, it covers a lot of what we've covered in years past. For example, we always focus on opposing preemption of local authority and preserving local funding. Those are two things that, that we'll stick to with this session as always. We don't really know how this session's gonna look. Talking with Barry Aaron's, the session begins on Monday, January eleventh. The legislature's not sure how they're gonna be meeting person and how that's gonna work with COVID precautions and all of that. So we'll see how that shakes out as it gets a little bit closer. But we will be sharing this agenda with our uh, LD-one representatives as soon as it's passed. And um, this is definitely aligned with the League of Cities and Towns, these first two guiding principles. And then diving into the actual city objectives. We only have three so far this year. And as you all have experienced in years past, this changes often during the session. This document, we uh, we, we take things off, we add things on, and we continue to adjust it as we go because bills come and go very quickly, it seems, every year. So this can, of course, change. But the first one that we have on our list is to continue state budget appropriations for the hotshots. If you remember back in twenty nineteen, the legislature approved an additional seven million dollars over seven years to help with our pension liability in that regard. And we will continue to seek for that one million per year. And so far, we've received two million overall from that appropriation. I will mention that that one million dollars is in the base budget, which is helpful to us because that means that as the legislators get their information to start crafting the budget, that million dollars is already proactively included. We don't have to actually fight for it every single year. It is included. And so that should be good and helpful to us. The second thing on our list is tourism marketing authority. And you may remember this from last year. There was a bill that we supported. Barry Aaron's uh, worked on it as well. It did not get through the session uh, because it was shortened due to the pandemic. Uh, but Senators Pace and Bowie are looking to introduce um, another bill this year. And just as a reminder, it would allow hotels, hotels and other related transient lodging facilities to petition the city or the county, if they're in the county, uh, to create an authority within a stated geographical region that would allow them to assess customers a per night, per room fee. All of that money collected would go towards tourism, uh, promotion, marketing in order to attract future visitors and tourists to those locations. Uh, you could also argue that because of COVID, and luckily, we're seeing an increase like Mark shared with us. Um, but they need that ability now more than ever to kind of direct their own destiny and have that ability. Uh, so we'll see how that goes, but, but generally, we're supportive of that as tourism is a large part of our industry here. And finally, on the list, expediting water adjudication issues. There's a couple of things to this one. This item that I've written up is specifically regarding the Gila adjudication. This is a longstanding case, and it determines the rights of all surface water users in the state. Basically, if you are using a well to pump groundwater and you are found to be affecting surface water, uh, you're considered to be pumping surface water, even though most of, if not all, groundwater users weren't allocated any surface water uh, rights to do that. So the question then becomes, how is the court supposed to assign an appropriation date for that water if it's determined to be pumping surface water? Uh, speaking with staff, speaking with others, this is not so immediate of an urgent need that we need to act on it now during this session. So we plan on working with other stakeholders, working with the League of Cities, uh, working with other cities and towns who are interested in crafting legislation that would basically hold us and hold others harmless if we ever were to be found pumping surface water. Basically, we'd be getting that appropriative right uh, included with the date that we started uh, drilling for groundwater. Um, So that's going to be in the works this session, but more specifically for this during this session, speaking with Barry Aaron's, he thinks it's wise to support legislation that would further fund the administrative office of the courts to expedite these types of issues. They typically take years, many years to get through, and this is not the only water-related adjudication issue that's on their docket. So we would support future funding through the legislature in order to get that done quickly. So Mayor, with that, those are the only three things that we have on the legislative agenda at this point. Like I mentioned, this can change. It can change very quickly. This is, I like to say, living and breathing. We're constantly looking at it. And I do plan on coming to the council each meeting, starting in the second meeting of January with updates and to get your feedback. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, very good, Tyler. So what is the speculation around what the legislature is going to do this session? What it's going to look like? Is, have you kind of heard the whole gamut, Tyler, of, you know, not really meeting much at all in person, doing skinny budget all the way to trying to do everything, you know, as normal? What are you hearing?
From what I've heard, and this, nothing's been confirmed and nothing is really known for sure yet, but they could potentially, in order to swear in their newest members, that would be done on the eleventh, then they might recess until a, a future date in the session when maybe the vaccine has been distributed or it's a little bit safer to meet, depending on the case numbers. I don't know what it would look like for them to meet remotely. They're probably talking about that, just like this council's doing. So we've yet to see what that's going to look like. I do have a kind of a heads up on some of their general interest, if you're interested in hearing that for this session.
Sure.
Okay. One of them being, I think everybody realizes this is coming as well, police reform. This has to do anything from body cameras, which we've obviously taken care of and we're moving on, to additional training, mandating certain training. Nothing has been officially formulated and, and talked as a bill yet. But there are legislators who are working on that from both the Republican and Democrat side. So we can expect to see something along those lines. Short-term rentals, that's another one that was pretty heated last year, and there were a few bills. Nothing ended up happening. Again, it was shortened. So there looks to be, even though Kate Brophy McGee, who's the major proponent, she is no longer in office, but she's handing off basically that, that work to probably Senator Kavanaugh, who's going to be helping with that. So it looks like we're going to have another short-term rental bill this year. A couple of other things, a big one would be construction contracting. And this, this gets to be a pretty complicated issue, but we've, we've discussed prime contracting versus point of sale and how that looks. There is a proposal out there and that I think it will be heard and, and probably have the momentum to get through this year, if not substantially progressed through the session. Basically, it would look like the thresholds, they would, they would drop the M R R A, which is anything that has to do with kind of the, the smaller, the smaller work, the smaller contracting work, the smaller items. It would be, they would get rid of that and basically say anything that's a hundred thousand dollars or more for residential project, project would be taxed as prime contracting. Anything less than that would be taxed at point of sale, basically materials where they're purchased from. And then for commercial, the, the threshold is one million dollars. So what it would do is clean up the tax code for contractors. We don't know what the dollar impact is going to look like on cities yet. The League of Cities is working on that as well. But this seems to have a lot of interest in getting done because if you've been following the last, oh, I don't know, eight, eight plus years, ten years, the legislature, they've been working on this. And the contractor lobby, the builder's lobby is very strong and very invested in this. So we'll see what the impact is to us, but that's, that's another big one. And those are probably the top three or four issues, Mayor.
Yeah, very good. Thank you for your report, Tyler. Let's go around here real quick and see if we have questions. Councilwoman Scholl?
Thanks, Tyler. I'm definitely curious to see kind of how this unfolds and what this session looks like. I think that will, that'll be the thing I'm watching for coming up soon because it's, it's coming faster than I think we think it is. So definitely curious to see how it unfolds.
Councilman Sishka?
No comments, Mayor.
All right, Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. And Tyler, I know historically we usually see maybe thirteen hundred bills dropped in the legislature. And it's hard enough to keep track of them when going through normal process and normal hearings and normal committee hearings, but especially with the ongoing restrictions under COVID and Zoom, and we have enough problems here in the city just trying to navigate through that. So I think it's really important that we monitor those bills that are progressing very closely. I know last year we had a sober homes bill that kind of we didn't know about until the last minute, and I had to burn up some phone time trying to contact the people involved there. Unfortunately, it didn't advance. But I, I think it's extremely important that we spend some time monitoring all those types of bills that are progressing and their impact on our local authority. So I know you've done a good job with that, and Barry has done a pretty good job with that as well. But some of those things that kind of dropped through the cracks can be really, really impactful to the city. So we'll have to keep a close eye on it and thank you for your, your interest in keeping us informed. Thank you, Tyler.
Councilman Blair?
I would just ask, Tyler, is there any move of foot that you hear down there rumblings with Bronavich wanting to bring back combining election dates? Or where are we at on that?
That, that legislation did pass, was it two years ago? I think it was two thousand eighteen that it, it passed. But if you remember, it's, it's basically elections would be consolidated if we see a significant decrease from a gubernatorial election to our city elections, in which they define as twenty-five percent voter turnout decrease or more. We haven't seen that. I know that it's, it's, it's going through the courts and I don't know if, if John can speak more to that. I'm, I'm not aware of the exact standing of what that's looking like with cities pushing against that, but that's kind of where it is.
Yeah. Mayor, I can address that real quickly. As you recall, the council authorized the Prescott to file an amicus brief, a friend of the court brief in the case supporting city of Tucson, a couple of other cities, Phoenix, joined, and I can't remember, there are three or four of us charter cities that join. That's still, I think the oral argument is set for sometime in January. It's going to be virtual, I suspect, still. And, and at that point, it's a number of months probably before a decision comes down from the Supreme Court as to whether or not that, that legislation's constitutional as to charter cities.
Why, John, a question, why does Bronavich continue to push the will of the people up that ladder when we're a chartered city and we've spoken?
Well, the Attorney General's job is to, is to enforce the law. And that law was duly adopted. And, and this, remember, this, the litigation all came out of this prop, or this fourteen eighty-seven, this eight, this House Bill fourteen eighty-seven, which allowed for a legislator to file a complaint when he or she believes that the city was violating a state statute. That's the one that tied into state shared revenues. The courts have, the courts have been good for the most part about throwing out or, or finding legislation or finding that cities aren't violating, aren't violating law. The most recent one came, came out of Phoenix when they up their Uber and Lyft user fees. And, and a legislator complained about that it was a, an increase in tax in, in that the, that Phoenix didn't have the authority to do that the way it did. The court came down and said, no, it's a fee. It's a user fee and therefore didn't violate the law. So on the other hand, the, the courts have come down against Tucson on, there's a firearms legislation that Tucson was more strict than the state and, and the Supreme Court came down and said, and, you know, that Tucson was violating the law. So we'll see how that plays out when it comes to the legislation. If, if the, if the Supreme Court comes down and says that the city of Prescott or, or that the, the legislation applies to charter cities as well, they're going to have to also then tell us how we do that because they're effectively amending our charter without voter approval, which, which is one of the constitutional arguments. So, but we won't know anything, it certainly won't affect, I shouldn't say certainly, it most likely won't affect the city's twenty twenty-one election, even if the court rules in favor of the legislation and, and against charter cities. It won't affect because it'll come such at a late, such a late period that, that our, I think we could count on our twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one elections proceeding forward. And then after that, we would have to figure out how to change election dates and, and either extend terms or shorten terms. So there's a lot of issues with that. But Mark Brenavich, the Attorney General, his job is to enforce the law, and that's what he's doing. And I don't, I don't think he has necessarily a philosophical or, or ideological viewpoint on it. The Attorney General's Office, you know, is, and like the city attorney's offices, we, we just call balls and strikes and tell you what the law is and as best we can.
Thank you, and you're out of here.
Let's go to Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. Thank you, Tyler. Principal or element number one, local control or authority is very important to us, obviously. And I was wondering if maybe we could be a little more specific and include some verbiage about maintaining local control over our own city council elections? And then also include something about opposing any loosening of regulations over our sober living homes.
Certainly, if the council wishes to add things to our agenda, I can do that.
Mayor, I, I would suggest that those, those horses have left the barn. But again, the legislation to consolidate elections has already been adopted. And if we're talking about legislative agenda, you know, that, that's already been adopted and it's, as we just discussed, it's going through the courts. And then as far as the sober home, that, that legislation has also already passed a couple of years back, essentially ceding over the operational control or regulation of sober homes to state DHS. The city still has its zoning authority and so our zoning code, land development code as far as, as sober homes and our, our distance separation requirements and those kinds of things are still in effect. So, you know, we could add it to our legislative agenda, but they're sort of moot at this point. Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking. Anything else from council? All right. Tyler, with the call that I'm on with the officers of the League of Arizona Cities and Towns with Nick Ponder, if you would like, that may be helpful as we get into a session, if there is a session, to get information right from Nick. He's, as you know, very helpful in this regard and gives us kind of an inside view right from Nick. So happy to help you with that. Thanks for your work on this, Tyler.
Thank you.
All right, we do need a motion here on the legislative agenda.
I move to approve the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one legislative agenda.
Second.
Motion, second, roll call, vote, please.
Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Mayor Protemschul?
Yes.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good? Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing?
Yes.
Councilman Sishka?
Absolutely.
Passes six zero.
Thank you for that. Well, I just want to say sincerely, it's been a real privilege and honor for me to work with you all here in twenty twenty. I think we could all argue this was probably the hardest year to lead from the city's perspective, let's hope, that we've ever seen. But, but I want to thank you all for your efforts this year. Thank you for all that you've given. Staff's done a tremendous job and council appreciate all your efforts. While it's been a difficult year, there's a lot of bright spots. There's a lot of great things that have happened when we talk about the airport or the Hilton Garden Inn or the Granite Creek walkway or, or lots of other things. Lot of cool things that have advanced in twenty twenty despite all the hardships. So I want to thank you all for your efforts this year and I look forward to a great twenty twenty-one. Always keep in mind, these quotes are picked randomly. This is from Franklin Delano Roosevelt. When you reach the end of your rope, tie a knot on it and hang on. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.